We call the work session Coffee County Education Order July 27, 2023. I'll release you for education.
Yes, sir, I sure will. Father, we thank thee for thy many blessings, keep us from harm, teach us to be true to each other ourselves indeed, Lord, guide and direct us as we do the work of the Coffee County School System here tonight in the best interest of our students and our families and our faculty and staff and our whole community, Lord, just give us wisdom and discernment as we do the business of school system here tonight. Jesus, then we pray. Amen.
Everybody see the agenda? Everybody good? Any motion to adopt the agenda?
I saw me.
Mr. Johnson, Mr. Wade II, all in favor?
Aye.
Pardon?
The first item on the agenda is the system update. And got quite a bit to go over here with y'all tonight. We had Wiregrass Regional College and Career Academy they were going to present, but Pam Schmidt had a medical issue that she needed to attend to. She told her we would just push her back and she could come at a later date. So we're gonna move through the presentation that we gave the other day at the Chamber of Commerce meeting. So we were asked by the Chamber of Commerce to come and deliver our strategic plans. So Ms. Speight and myself and Mr. Mobley and Jessica Baker went to the Chamber of Commerce meeting and presented this, and I thought you might find it a helpful update as we move forward starting this school year. So we're gonna proceed with this presentation. And mission and vision, of course, destination, graduation for college career in life and create a stronger community. And what we've been talking about with our principals, just so board members that you're on the same page with what we've been discussing with our principals at our retreat that we held a couple of weeks ago, is really focusing this year with our students on community and opportunity and focus and fairness and ethics and excellence. If we do those things, if we really talk with our young people, you'll see at the bottom, community, we want to build a stronger community, a school community, an entire county community. Opportunity, we want to give every student an opportunity to a great education. We want to focus on teaching and learning. If y'all think about why we're here, why are we here? We're not here to talk about the daily issues going on out there. We're not here to talk about what the temperature's gonna be tomorrow evening. We're here to talk about academics and teaching and learning, and that's our business. So our focus is gonna be on teaching and learning. Fairness, we want to be fair to all concerned, and anytime we're dealing with an issue, we want to make sure we're doing what's fair. Ethics, we certainly want to talk with our staff, with our students, with everybody involved about doing the right thing. If we're making a decision, we want to do what's right, and we want to follow the golden rule and treat people like you want to be treated. So we want to talk with our young people a lot about ethics. And then if we do those things and we really drill those concepts into our students, our staff, our entire community, we're gonna reach excellence, and we're gonna be one of the best school systems in the state, and that's what we want. That's what Coffee County expects, and that's what we shared with our Chamber of Commerce the other day, our business partners. They want our school system to be one of the best, and that's what we're gonna strive to do. All right? This is our graduation rate from this past school year. They've not released the latest one, but you'll see that our graduation rate at 94.2 at Coffee High School is above the state average at 84.1. Wiregrass Regional College and Career Academy, 96.9 is above the state average, and then the district average of 92.6 is above the state average of 84.1. And you may wonder, why is the district less? It's less because we factor in the ninth grade academy into the district graduation rate, and I do hate it, but we do have some kids when they turn 16, they'll walk away from us and go do something else. So that's why the district grad rate of 92.6 is there. So moving forward, aviation. Now, what are we doing with aviation in the Coffee County schools? We have formed a partnership with Middle Georgia State University and Wiregrass Technical College to begin our aviation pathways in the Coffee County school system. We'll have a flight pathway, and we'll have what's called a structural AMP program pathway. Next slide. Now, Middle Georgia State University School of Aviation is gonna come to Coffee High School, and we're gonna offer to 11th and 12th graders through dual enrollment the opportunity to start the flight pathway. The classes that'll be offered at Coffee High School will be offered this year, the safety class, the regulations class, the human factors, and the meteorology classes. So we're gonna offer four of the classes in the flight pathway to students at Coffee High School. So students enrolled in the program will be able to transition to Middle Georgia State University and Eastman upon graduation. So they'll already have classes going in at Eastman in the flight pathway, or if they chose to go to another flight school, they would have coursework leading to that degree. All right? So we have six students signed up to do the dual enrollment right now at Coffee High School. We're also opening this up to the surrounding private school. If somebody wants to come, if Wiregrass College and Career Academy, if somebody wanted to come take flight at Coffee High School, they could, but we're gonna open it up to allow community of their students who want to do flight in Coffee County, they'll have the opportunity to do that right there at Coffee High School. Okay? The second pathway is the structural AMP program. Now, you might ask, what is that? What does that mean? This class will be airframe and power plant program leading up to that. It won't be the actual airframe and power plant right now. It's gonna be the structural part. That's where they work on the sheet metal on the outside of the airplane, or they work on the interior of the airplane, like seating and furniture and stuff such as that inside of the airplane, the interior. So we're starting the structural program in January of '24 through Wiregrass Technical College. They have a hangar out there that they're loading up with equipment and different equipment that they'll need to deliver that programming, and then ultimately they're working towards the AMP. That's the actual airplane engine mechanic program. So we're working towards that, and we're gonna start with the structural program. So this coming school year, we will have two pathways, one flight and one through the technical college for structural. All right? And the idea with the structural is if students can learn that metalwork and such as that, and they can get a job even if they don't go to Savannah to work at Gulfstream or Atlanta to work for Delta, then they can stay here, and a lot of our manufacturing does that metalwork here, such as the trailer manufacturer, the manufacturing housing industry, and the modular building industry, they can put those skills to work. So two really exciting pathways that we are, no pun intended, up and away with here in Coffee County. So that's exciting stuff. Our commitment, we're committed to exposing students to K-12 aviation, and K-12 to aviation. So we're gonna be, you're gonna hear more about that. We'll probably be purchasing over the next few years as we work through our strategic plans and children's books on aviation for the younger kids, and then possibly get into some drone work and things of that nature in middle and high schools. You're gonna continue to hear things about aviation in Coffee County schools. And we're gonna support our local educational partners and their efforts to create new opportunities for students through aviation. I just saw Dr. Tanner from South Georgia State College yesterday, and we talked about this, and he said they're staying ready to support this however they can at South Georgia State College. So we've got Middle Georgia College, Wiregrass Technical College, South Georgia College, Coffee County Schools, all of our educational agencies working on this. Now, strategic plan, y'all know we just approved the strategic plan for the next five years a couple of weeks back, so at this time Allison Speight, our Director of Strategic Planning and Accountability, is gonna update y'all the strategic plan.
Good evening, everyone. We are, like Dr. Lee said, we've gotten that strategic plan approved and in the process of getting it published, but it's now time for us to move into our implementation phase. And so just a reminder of the areas that we are planning to focus on on the next five years. So goal area one is student academic success, and in that area, our first performance goal is to ensure high-quality engaging curriculum and instruction for all of our students. One thing that we do want to highlight there is that we are going to have some perfect five initiatives there to disseminate things there that we're gonna focus on, continue to focus on the next five years. Next, our next objective is to implement a high-quality assessment system, which includes all content areas. Our next objective is to expand the academy and workforce development model, and as Dr. Lee mentioned, we have our aviation piece highlighted in here to continue to have attention on that development and implementation of that over the next five years, as well as bringing awareness to our civic and social responsibilities and making sure that we're shaping our students to build a well-rounded community and country. Goal area two is communication and stakeholder engagement, and our first performance objective is to refine, excuse me, and sustain effective communication processes with all of our stakeholders. Objective two is to continue to strengthen our plans and processes for effective engagement with our families. Objective three is to expand and sustain meaningful relationships with all of our community partners, and we shared, like Dr. Lee said, some of those initiatives and our focuses for that at our chamber meeting on Monday. So our community partners are aware of some initiatives that we have in place from the school system's perspective. Goal area three is a high-quality workforce. Our first objective is to retain highly effective people in all of our positions. Objective two is to evaluate our staff and provide relevant professional learning to ensure that they're supported. And objective three is to recruit and hire high-quality people in all of our positions. Goal area four is organizational effectiveness, and our first objective is to ensure and sustain processes for effective and efficient operations across all of our departments. Objective two is to ensure and sustain effective and efficient financial practices to ensure financial and fiscal responsibility. And objective three is to ensure and maintain safe facilities and healthy environments for all students and staff. And our final goal area is a supportive culture and climate. Objective one in that was to create and maintain a safe, welcoming, inclusive, and equitable school climate that promotes learning for all of our students. Objective two is to foster the social and emotional well-being of our staff and our students. And objective three is to create a culture of high expectation that celebrates successes throughout our district, and that's with our adults, our staff, and with our students. And the capturing kids' hearts is an initiative that falls upon this goal area that we are looking to implement this year. I know at our pre-planning days next week, we'll launch that across all of our schools. That's an initiative that Dr. Lee's really wants to be immersed in our culture for this year, so we're starting our training for that during pre-planning on next week when our teachers return.
Thank you for pointing that out, Ms. Speight. And you will hear our teachers talking about capturing kids' hearts over the next couple of weeks, because we're gonna train everybody. Everybody that works with students is gonna be trained, so you're gonna hear about it. And the whole point behind capturing kids' hearts is if we're going to affect the kids in a positive way through positive relationships, we have to start with the adults. So we're gonna be having large groups of teachers and staff in the room together, and they're gonna be going through activities in which they're gonna bond as a community and build strong relationships with each other within those school communities. So we're real excited about what we're gonna see happen with capturing kids' hearts, and just first off, bring our staff together in a community, and then that will move into the students and bringing them together. And hopefully, we're gonna see a kinder, gentler, and more loving community where everybody's pulling in the same direction. That's what we want for our mission and vision, destination, graduation for college career in life, and to create a stronger community for an equitable next of education. Now, the next slide is partnership opportunities. We're real excited, and at the chamber meeting the other day, Ms. Baker presented this, but we let her off the hook tonight and said we could take care of that slide, but she presented to the Chamber the flex, foundation, leadership, and entrepreneurial experience. If you recall, this past school year, we had a competition much like a Shark Tank type competition at Coffee High School where students submitted their proposals for their business, and then we had a $3,000 winner, and a $1,000 winner, and another $1,000 winner of that Shark Tank type activity that we had at Coffee High School this past year. Well, this year, we're gonna take it to the next level, and we're going to enter the competition with systems from around the state, and this flex competition, they'll be awarding up to $7,000 in prize money and the opportunity to advance to the state level and the state championship of flex across the state of Georgia. So you're gonna be hearing more about that as we move into this school year in creating and nurturing that entrepreneurial spirit that we've had in Coffee County for decades and even centuries. So we're real excited about the flex opportunities for our students. Next slide is the community partners. Once again, this was a Coffee High slide in which they have developed partnerships and had generous donations from Sunbelt Greenhouse, Premium Peanut, Chick-fil-A and Douglas, and Douglas National Bank. And we've got other community partners, but these were the ones that were highlighted at the chamber meeting earlier this week. Coffee High School teachers who did externships, these teachers signed up and volunteered to work at an organization, a business, or an industry in our community. So as you'll see, the teachers on the slide, we had one who was employed with the City of Douglas, another with Sunbelt Greenhouses, another with Goodwill, another with the university extension system, Southeastern Orthopedics, City of Douglas, Unison Behavioral Health, and even our Coffee County School System Nutrition Department. And the idea was for these teachers to go work in these businesses and industries for one week, and then when they get back to the classroom, they'll be able to share with our students the type of work that they can get into in the community and the type of jobs available in our community and the type of industry that we have in our community. So hats off to these educators who volunteered and did this activity over the summer, and they were paid a small stipend to participate in this activity. So we're real proud for this group of dedicated educators in Coffee County. One Coffee, one team. I did want to mention also the latest edition of Georgia Young Farmers came out, and this is tabbed because if you look at this latest edition of Georgia Young Farmers, you're gonna find Coffee County laced throughout this edition. On page 17, you'll find a real nice article from our very own state Ag Teacher of the Year, Young Farmer Teacher of the Year, Spencer Highsmith, a really good article on bull breeding and soundless exams that could eliminate a potential train wreck for cattle farmers in the state of Georgia. So a great article in there from Spencer, and then if you turn over to page 21, you'll see a big article right in the middle of the page with one of our student leaders and seniors that graduated this year, Jack Lienfeldter, and he's highlighted in the magazine. And then you'll find towards the end, another article from our Coffee High School and Coffee County School System Ag Department with an article, the 2023 Ag Literacy Day here in Coffee County, and that was written by Spencer Highsmith and Madison Britt out at Coffee Middle School, and they talked about the young children that we took out to the Ag Barn, and they had activities at the Ag Barn for them to experience agriculture and those activities in Coffee County. So real excited about what's going on in ag, and we know that ag is our number one and largest industry in Coffee County and the state of Georgia, so real excited about that. And then our last item that I didn't want to mention to y'all is that I had the opportunity to represent Georgia back in the first week of July, representing AASA, that's the National Superintendent's Association, at their Board of Directors, and I was one of three delegates from the state of Georgia that represented our state at the national meeting of the Superintendent's Association, and I had with me Ms. or Dr. Norice Price, who's the superintendent in Baldwin County, and then also Ken Dyer, who is the superintendent over in Dougherty County. And it's kind of interesting, the last few years that we've gone, this was my third year going, and GSSA pays for us to go. They pay for our flights and hotel accommodations, but anyways, the last two years, I was kind of the younger person that went, and not in age, but the one who had to kind of organize all the appointments for the people who had gone before me. But this year, I was the elder one, and I had to organize all the appointments, and I will say that our first day, we spent the delegate assembly, but then our second day, we did get in, and we had a face-to-face meeting with Raphael Warnock, Senator Warnock, and Adam, I was sure to share with him the ag situation and the importance that ag is in our community, and I made a point to make sure he was aware of that, and he is on the ag committee according to what he shared with us up there in Washington. And then we also got in to meet face-to-face with Buddy Carter. He spent some time with us and had a chance to talk with him about some educational issues, as well as Alston Scott, who represents our district. And so we got in, and Alston actually made time to sit us down in his office and had a chance to get in there and talk with him about educational issues that we were concerned with. So it was a fruitful visit. We did send Ken over. He met with Senator Alsos, one of his aides, and then also we were able to meet with one of Rick Allen's aides. He couldn't meet face-to-face with us. But it was a real productive trip and a chance to really advocate on behalf of children in Coffee County and the state of Georgia. So excited to report out to the board. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is the minutes from our previous meeting. Is there any amendments or changes we need to make to those minutes? All right, if it pleases the board, we'll place those on the consent agenda for the regular meeting. Finance, under finance, and you'll notice that Robin is out tonight. She has a medical issue that she's dealing with, so she's been out for all week and will continue to be out for some time, but we are covering for her and have people in the audience out there helping us. Some of our staff is covering her responsibilities, and so anyways, I just thought you may need to know that, board members, so keep Robin in your prayers, and she's doing fine, but she's not here with us right now. But I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Bradford to present the financial report.
Okay, this document here, now this is our tentative financials for the end of fiscal year '23, for June 30, 2023. So we hope to come back to you in the month of September with the final financials for June. We're in the process of closing out, posting our accruals, and we've got to do our capital assets, posting, a bond posting, and close out all our federal grants. So by September, we should have everything finalized. But we're estimating that we'll end the fiscal year at $28 million approximately, but we'll know more as the months progress. Okay? The next document is our SPOS report. So for the month of June, the revenue was $729,677.38, so up from the month of last month, but it is like one month lagging there. Any questions on any of those items?
Yes, ma'am. All right. Well, if it pleases the board, we'll place that on the consent agenda for the meeting following this. Oh, yeah, the financials we want, we want approved because they're the tentative. All right. Thank you. Surplus property. We have a number of police cars that were donated by the City of Douglas to the school system, and we are asking the board to declare those donated cars as surplus property, and they are going to be sold to the, they're gonna be given back to the City of Douglas for them to do with what they want to. If they want to sell, they can sell them, if they want to make some money off of them, or if they can, they can, but we'll surplus them back to the City of Douglas. Any questions about that? And next item on the agenda is the policies. We have policy DIB, and once again, Ms. Bradford, this is a financial policy, and this is really a compliance policy that the auditors have told us that we have to update to be in compliance with GASB, and these are the general acceptable accounting rules that we must follow as a public institution, and so we have to account for these GASB rules, and they will be clarified in this policy update. So I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Bradford to give any more detail on that and answer any questions on that.
So the first one is policy DIB financial reports, and the second is the regulations, the DIB financial reports. Both documents will be revised to reflect both of those requirements, and requirements pertain to lease agreements and to software and subscription purchases. Now, Coffee County, we do not have any lease agreements, but we do need to update our policy in case we did down the road. Okay? But we've also updated the verbiage to reflect right-to-use assets for those lease agreements if we did sometime have those. And also, the intangible asset listing has been updated to include subscriptions and software, and that's referred to as SEVITAS. That is in the policy. And then the threshold for those has been set for $150,000, and that is in line with our computer software that was already in the policy, and we've also updated the other ones to $150 to reflect those items. And also, the machinery and equipment asset, we have updated that to 50 from 25. Other school systems, we've been in communication with them, because everyone's having to update this policy, and we're trying to get in line with other systems. That's how they set their thresholds for those. And this is just how we capitalize on our assets and how we document that. So this is what these policies relate to. Okay? Any questions or thing on that? What's in the handouts here is the revision and then the one that is currently in place. So you have the two documents that contain the updates, and the other two are currently what's in the policy. Okay?
If it pleases the board, we will place those policy updates on the consent agenda, and they will sit for one month, and we'll come back at the next monthly meeting and ask for board approval of those policies. If you have any questions over the next 30 days, please don't hesitate to call or whatnot. We're trying to answer whatever questions you may have.
What we got on the consent agenda, right?
Uh, let's see, not much. Minutes and surplus property and the policies.
What are they? Or voter policy?
Uh, they're not, they're not, they're gonna be approved for public review.
Okay.
So that was the point, they'd be on the consent agenda for public review. All right. Are there any other questions? If there's no questions, I do have need for an executive session to discuss property matters and also student discipline-related issues, also the employment evaluation or termination of an employee, and also the superintendent's evaluation and contract. All right.
Motion.
Motion we've, like we said, we discussed.
It's law.
Second.
Express. Flav.
You need a motion to exit too?
Yep.
Does that make you?
You got one?
Yep.